We gave everyone on my classes at middle school, we pretty, I think they're a little thing and it's, it's pretty cool.
How is it going?
I need to go back after this so I can get ready. I'm pretty much getting ready the night before for the next day. I mean, I'm a bit overwhelmed.
Imagine you kept me up at hours.
Yes, now no, one, one night a week during the week and then I'll work weekends, but I'm done by three or four o'clock. So.
Let's try to get your feet on the ground.
Yeah, the, the hardest thing is, I'm actually enjoying cross-country, but that's the hardest thing to get to. Cause I mean, I have to, school's out and I have to get going and there's that's. It'll be fine.
It can take some time for his air phone on.
Yeah.
Get it flowing.
But I actually, I actually liked my sixth graders. I mean, sixth grades and all, I guess.
Sixth grade students, they have no idea what they're doing.
It's a ten, it's a ten day girls can be mean. But I, I mean, I couldn't believe they were there with us. They're better. But they also are, if you're, if you're willing to give a change, they, they, they will listen to the word where you. At least so far.
My brain. Brian.
Hello.
Done. There was a some white in the sun.
Yeah, it's been like that. It comes like a vent. On the seats.
Still have it. It's always having though. You're in the walking road. I don't know why it woke up five thirty five. Is that a magic number? Very fun.
I don't know. Don't say a bit of that.
Yeah.
Forever or somebody's like. You're not telling me it's just. And tomorrow's.
Worried.
With the weather, you think, so I don't know, but if I, you know, you say, I'm like.
Yeah, let's see how it's gonna be.
Tom. Tom, I put my, I put my, my key pairing Legos, they're in my classroom up high, so nobody's gonna get mad. Chuck, when we have our kids, are those Legos? Yes, yes, they are. Do you do that by yourself? I mean, I don't know.
All directions.
I, I guess I'm working with Felsey again this year. Felsey Lee and that Future City.
Oh, yeah. That'd be cool.
Yeah, I did it last year. It was pretty fun.
Start reading.
Read this in the airplane tomorrow.
Going back to work tomorrow.
Yeah. Nonstop test. You know, hopefully our very good, well, I'm not being long. We got, we got.
The stadium.
Okay, told her they wanted me to go out and help them. Everybody must say. Every year.
This is my, this is. That way. It's that sweet voice.
Yeah, I see you. Got me sad. Yeah.
That's the same guy.
Yep. How perfect his hair is. Not bad for an old guy, right?
Yeah. Sixty. Sixty.
I know, yeah. You broke it here too. It's been left in China twenty-five. The whole version, but you're right though, it's good though. Mine's bad.
Yeah.
As come like my wife results. Yeah, I don't know what you're trying to do. Maybe you gotta shift.
Oh, well, you still had, you know, when I met you, when I first met.
Well, my head fell at twenty-five.
At that school.
Yeah. Yeah, whatever. Shaking English.
Yeah. So basically.
Twenty-five has been. No, time flies.
It does.
Yeah, okay. She knew all good ones. There's no business. He says, see for Chris.
Yeah, it is nice. It's bold. More than losing people their interests. Say that. Or an apple.
You have one more, one more minute. You can keep talking if you like. But you really start getting a little nervous. It's fine, if I might call me into order, if you would join me in the pleasure of agents. We'll be moving right on to public comments. So first I wanted to remind everybody that those of you who have not been here, just make sure when you come in that you do need to sign in. So we have several rules here. Also, under the public comments, we do like to keep comments to three minutes for each person. We have quite a few on this list. So if we could be mindful of that too, I'd appreciate it. Um, Richard, you're up first.
Thank you. Well, we've got three minutes, so I'm just gonna kind of highlight a few things. I want to start by, uh, two weeks ago, Commissioner Shepard made a motion to allow basically like open discussion, for lack of better terms. And I noticed that three of you voted against it, two of you voted for it. And my first thing is, I just want to know just real quick, why do you not want to have people that you represent be able to speak to you? Why do we have to fit within your guidelines? It used to be five minutes. And you guys took five minutes down to three minutes. And I wonder why? You work for us, we work together, but you don't want us to talk. Then the other thing I noticed is when you sign in for your three minutes, which I'm already probably half, halfway through. You guys said that there are only three people allowed to talk on one topic. So we guys go to raise our taxes again. And people are concerned. You basically say, we'll hear from you for three minutes. And we only got up to have three people. So I guess I'd like to hear from you. Why did you vote against allowing us to talk?
The city commissioner was forced to conduct city business. That is ultimately our task to do. It would be most efficient use of our time. That's why we encourage you to first go through our city administration. Um, letting him go, this is what we're talking about. This is the issue I have. And so that gives him a chance to look for answers that will be, he would rather deal with it before you to this level. Um, so there's a commission of change to kind of what to expect and know what we're talking about. Um, I've said with ultimate people to run the city. It can get cumbersome and too much if we just allow open discussion the entire time. The open discussion should be done before that. And then this is where we come to kind of wrap it up, if that's what we need to do.
Okay, that's that's a good political response. Um, I've been to hundreds of city commission meetings over the years and you watch certain cities that are like, yeah, we want to hear from you. And then there's other cities that say, no, we don't want to hear from you. And one of the things they do is lower you down to three minutes. But let's move on because I just want to talk about the taxes real quick. Um, the city, there was a lot of elderly people in the city on fixed incomes. So when you raise taxes at the levels you have been raising them, it, it hurts them the most. There's a lot of people in the street who go, it doesn't hurt maybe. But it hurts those people. So I wonder, wouldn't you for instance, two years ago, raised their taxes sixteen point nine percent approximately? Did you sit there and think about cost of living? Maybe a three point seven percent for inflation at four percent? When we go, we're gonna raise your taxes sixteen point nine percent in one year. And what that does to people on fixed incomes? I don't expect a response. I, these are questions I'm just asking you to be thinking about. If you look back in twenty twenty, you guys raised a quarter percent on our sales tax. And that was under the auspice, if you remember. We raised a quarter percent to raise some money for parks and recs, which I think is very important. But we also lowered the revenue for the property tax. So we were told that our property taxes gone down, we vote for the quarter percent, which we did. Two years later, you went right back to raising the amount of your property tax. So you doubled it and you pulled money from the general fund, C I P. I've been going through, I've been trying to go through the budgets, trying to make heads or tails, but it looks like two years later, you pulled a couple hundred grand from either the general fund or the C I P. And you gave it to Parks and Recs, which again, and that was soon as Parks and Recs, you have a shirt. Yeah, I don't know who shows it. I go around flipping about Parks and Recs. It's very important to have Parks and Recs. I'm not anti Parks and Recs. But when I go through the budget, like I used to do as a manager, things that stick out to me are that budget's pretty heavy, pretty high. They're doing good things with it, that's fine. What I don't want is I don't want to get into a position where you retire. And the answer, we need to break back the answer of those is we're gonna raise taxes. When we raised taxes three years ago, you raised taxes, you and David, Commissioner, raised taxes, voted to raise taxes last year. You voted to raise taxes. And if it wasn't for our city attorney knowing what's going on and saying, you don't have a plan, you would have raised our taxes last year. Tony voted against it. The thing about, about that is again, taxes are necessary. I am also paying taxes. But I want to see what the taxes are going to. I want to see changes. And since twenty sixteen, I've been back in this town. And I haven't seen positive changes. I shouldn't say that. There have been positive things that have gone on, but in general, it hasn't been a lot of changes that people would like to see. You need a really strong police department. You need to have a safe community, you need to have good schools, you need to have parks and recs, kids need to have a place to go. But you can't just keep saying we're gonna raise taxes every time we want money. Now this year, you guys are voting again towards taxes, I believe, I could be wrong. Five, does that correct? Up to five? You'll think about that because five, you multiply that by approximately thirty-seven thousand dollars. You're gonna raise your taxes again. Now I went through my taxes the other day on the property where I moved in. I'm gonna pull that one this year between the properties I own. Again, it's not that that's easy for me, but there's a lot of people I will include, my brother and mom, people that are on fixed incomes. That hurts them. No luck to be without. Because the city, who by the way, now has money in the general fund and has money in the C I P fund, instead of taking that money and getting some software for this, for the state hall, which is important. Maybe doing the flood with the Fisher Center, that's important, but those are ones that are not needs. And if you have to raise no taxes and the logistics taxes do that, then I suggest you go back through the budget. And you type in the budget and look at where you can, from the C I P, the general fund, and get the loans downstairs, some software, and get the flood and Fisher Center fixed. The money you have in the budget, it's there. Last year we watched. Some people watched. You guys vote to raise our taxes. Commissioner Shepard called and said, they obviously they didn't go through them because no clue. And I, I remember saying, let's have a special meeting Friday and let's go back through the budget. And from to Friday, somehow you guys found the money not to raise taxes. What's going on? That doesn't make sense to me. And it's like, well, if one of you just looked at me and said, I need the budget, I need the first thing I would say to them was, see, what have you cut? For not to assume I could be wrong. Congratulations to our police chief because we, the bullets of two weeks ago, I believe he was the only one that came and said, oh, I have solutions to cut money from my budget. That's what people want to see. Are we efficient? Are we getting through that? Making sure are we, are we cutting the budget to do something or just to raise taxes? You raised taxes two years. You voted to raise taxes three years in a row. My question to you is, raise taxes next year? Can you say?
Depends on what we do this year, doesn't it?
I don't know. Raise taxes next year?
If it's, if it's necessary, I don't know what, I may focus on this year.
Okay.
And so could you to Richard, we have questions about the budget and where was this money, was it done? And that's right down there. We got to just go Brad Scott call and say, I already can kind of close the budget with you. So we can, you can show them how you see it.
And that was the case, but I've, I've got involved in a few items with the city and you guys threw me back on me every time I tried to get involved.
That's not my suggestion I have.
Okay, well, it's not a good suggestion because it doesn't work.
And, and for now, we are, we're past that.
This question for you. I would challenge, okay, because I'm going to with a, with several of the friends that graduated the same year from this high school up here. We are going to do a day of service downtown where we're cleaning up the areas, just weed eating and a few other things. I would challenge each of you commissioners to do the same. I would ask that you guys get involved for one day of service and leave this community. And maybe we can put the weeds on the street from the city hall cleaned up. Or the weeds from the sidewalk over there cleaned up. Or maybe going to the Lego and clean out all the weeds. Could, as a community, come to that because you think I'm, I'm not your enemy. I just don't want to see this little town prosper. And you do not prosper by raising people's taxes year after year. Or bringing trailer parks back to Iowa. That's not the way we prosper. The way we prosper is by having a food. Beautiful town that people respect, a safe police department, a great parks and recs for our kids. Volunteer fire department, that's what they want. That's how we prosper. So I'm just asking, would you guys commit to do two or three or four hours of service in between? Just clean things up.
Tell me when your day is.
And you, I'm just asking, would you do that? Because I think it would, I think it would bring the community together. And we need it because again, we're sure we're crossing weeds to come to the city hall. That should never happen. Never.
Already thinking on the, the walking trail, the garden areas, walking trail. I do that whenever I need to.
Good.
Put a drink or water.
Kirsten Poson, would you agree to do that?
I don't have any problem doing that. I already do a lot. The one, I already got. It's beautiful. So I'm asking, is it? Again, I was.
See.
For people, I think Richard can tell you that.
Hey. Okay. Hi. So I'm here with the, with the chamber and we're just asking for, uh, the typical road closures that we do for Maple Leaf. So closing off Oregon, uh, we are going to stretch a little bit further down Oregon, stopping at the, the alley is by Main Street flowers. And that's just to allow our growing art show, uh, to extend pass. And it's on, of course, the twenty seventh of September. Uh, should I give this to Mickey? The, it's, it's working closed. We're of course hoping that that will, will be okay. We're expecting a good crowd. We have several of the things that we found in the past. We've extended our musical acts to get people to, um, come and enjoy Hiawatha and just on the I just feel like going rogue a minute. Um, I do also want to let you know that October fifteenth and eleventh, the Kansas Art Education Association is coming to Hiawatha. That's going to bring a hundred fifty to two hundred people to town. Um, I'm very excited about it. It's a deal for the conference to land in town. Hopefully this is a bed space for everyone, but we figured out it does not. But that would bring educators from both Kansas, Nebraska and Missouri. Um, my hope is that they will be taking lots of photos and spreading this across social media. So people want to come and see the beautiful city of Naples for themselves. Do you have any questions?
No. Thank you so much.
You need a motion, don't we?
I would maintain a motion to close the, what, close the streets? So that pretty much what you asked before.
Katie, yes, yes.
As presented.
I'll make the motion.
So in second?
Second.
Second to close the streets for the Maple Festival as presented? Any further discussion? If not, no.
Well, there.
Bye. Motion passed, five zero. Excellent. Shane, Katie, we're excited to see what else out there. Uh, Richard Evans.
Thank you. I have a kind of written script here, um, that we get things, get through this and everything to make sure I don't forget anybody down here. Mayor and municipal council members. Uh, thank you for giving me this opportunity. I hope everyone is, we just hosted the, uh, Class B State American League Baseball Tournament at the end of July. We brought seven communities throughout the state of Kansas, all the way from, uh, Colby uh, to southeast Kansas here in the Hiawatha. This is one of our goals. As a member, as an ex-member of the Hiawatha Baseball Soccer Club, what I wanted to do was bring Legion Baseball back to Hiawatha one time or another and just have to work out this year. Uh, it's a great opportunity for us as a community to showcase our community to these seven other communities. And just to let you know and everything, I got nothing but positive feedback from all seven communities. The visitors and everything from our businesses throughout Hiawatha. I went visited after the tournament, that stated the, the traffic increased and everything, hotels. And, uh, the opportunity with this tournament brought to those businesses and everything. And I also want to extend a heartfelt thank you to the Hiawatha rec department, specifically Stacey Jasper, Brad Scott, Bethany Meyer and Tegan Diller. They provided huge amount of support to me and the American Legion baseball team and getting this field ready. And preparation for the tournament out here took an awful lot of work. This is just not your typical and fourth and go play baseball type of scenario. Took an awful lot of people involved in this here throughout the community. I also want to send thank you out here to Brad Scott for his work behind the scenes and our communication and everything. And what he did to support our program and making this tournament a success. The state American Legion Baseball Commission asked that we do this for two consecutive years. I have not committed to year two yet. Uh, but the way it's looking right now, between the coaches, myself and the community, uh, I don't see why I wouldn't do this here. And so what I'm telling you is kind of expect us back next, uh, July for another tournament out there. So thank you very much for your support and having you guys do for, uh, for us and the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was raining weekend, wasn't it?
It was.
That's what I thought. The other, so. Thank you. And
beauty theme, uh, so I'm from the library and, um, so this part of today, I'm just gonna do my normal, uh, updates from the library. I did give out a packet for lots of information. I'm not gonna go through and read everything because that will take a very long time. Um, so I'll just give some highlights like over our summer. Um, which is the very last page, if you want, like my graphs, um, for our summer. Uh, but this year we had, I've been seventy-six people signed up for our summer library program. We had forty-one events for everyone and we had one thousand five hundred and one people in attendance over all of those forty-one events. Um, it was a lot of fun. Um, we opened that, we even have, uh, Plinko every week. So four hundred and thirteen people came to the library, um, over the seven weeks and played Plinko with us and got to take home prizes. Um, and, uh, on that spreadsheet where my director's put is, it gives you the breakdown of everything else we had going on. Summer at Auburn and everything like that. Um, other highlights was that we had eighty-two thousand five hundred and thirty minutes logged of reading on a bean stack or, uh, reading tracking software that we use. And we also had one thousand thirty-seven books logged. And that would be for the little kiddos, um, five and under, uh, since it's kind of hard to track as many minutes you read to a three-year-old. Um, and then otherwise we ended there somewhere with our carnival for the sixth, for the third year. We had a carnival, the second year we had at the library. We had seventy-six people there for our carnival. Um, it was great to have, we had a board list. We had, um, torture screening room. And had a setup for them. We had popcorn, um, all kinds of things going on. And it was, uh, we had a lot of great feedback for our summer. A lot of people came in, we did tie dye, we had, um, self-defense classes for the kiddos, all types of stuff. And we had a lot of fun with this summer. And now we're getting up this week. It is our first week of fall activities. And, um, we put in there on my reports, all the fall activities that we've got going. Um, a couple of things, we have family craft days, we're gonna have every couple of months. So, um, people of any age are welcome to come in and, and sit down for, um, uh, drop in during from one to one P M. to six P M. and just work on crafts that we have out. Um, so October would be home. December would be winter holiday, I think. Um, and then our special events, like we have, uh, Canva for beginners workshop, we can build a software, maybe some of the um, was it, just I have our, um, infographics and posters and everything else. And so we're gonna teach anybody who would like to learn the basics of Canva, we're gonna do that on September fifth. Um, I know I saw in the paper that we already have, that Rainbow Tech Topics will move to a third Friday. Um, we have a senior social on the first and third Fridays. And so we're gonna try to catch a few more people to come in and, and learn from our Rainbow friends. Um, and we'll have a in patch and storytelling crafts, um, in October. So we're pretty excited about all of that. And the rest of my report was, we're putting on our friends of the library and promoting, I have a book sale at the end of September, September twenty-ninth through October fourth, they're working on their fall book sale at the Fisher Center. All the hours and things that they'll be doing it there. Um, otherwise, early this year in April, they had their annual meeting and, uh, Victoria Jelks, Horton High School junior last year, she's now a senior, um, she performed some poetry and talked about her experiences with the National Poetry Out Loud Competition. Um, and then otherwise we just reported, we had a really great gift back to move forward. Matching day event with the friends and that Ag partners was able to donate money, um, to the friends for our roof and gutter projects. So I threw out a lot of information really quickly to everybody who had a lot of confusion. So I'm happy to take the questions. Um, the rest of the info packet has some other like twenty twenty-four highlights. I'm pretty sure I've already given everyone, um, what happened last year. And then the rest of it was kind of more changing to the budget, which I'm sure we'll get into later this evening. So if you guys want to answer any questions about what I'm doing.
Stuff. Keeping the kids busy in the summer, that's a big job.
Yes. You know, we had, yeah, it was good to have, like, roughly half the challenge was to come through, um, in seven weeks, so.
Any questions?
I really appreciate all the events that you sponsor for the kids, well, for everyone, but for the adults like.
Yeah. Yeah, we really tried to make sure we're.
Active, I think it's.
Yes, we're trying to get out, out into the community as best as we can bring the money. So.
Yeah, good job.
How do you advertise this?
Um, we have things in the paper about like almost every week, if not maybe just every other week. Um, and we send things, we send our entire monthly schedule to both the paper and the radio. We post on. We post on Facebook consistently almost every day. So. Yeah. Okay.
Did you give us an update on the status of your building as far as the gutters and the roof and all that?
Yes. So we have estimates for the government for waiting. We've had another company come out and look at it and so we're waiting to hear back from them on the estimate that they have for us for the gutter and roof project.
Roof or gutters or what?
Sure, it's with the guttering, but to get to the Yankee guttering, they have to pull off sections of the roof um, to the way that's constructed for how that works. Um, they have to get to parts of it and there's a few places like the flat, we've had over a main entrance, some work. Um, so it's not the entire roof, it's, but it's, it's all the covers. Yep.
Any idea what that's gonna cost?
Well, the first estimate was roughly a hundred and forty thousand. Um, our friends of the library have raised about thirty six thousand to go specifically towards that. And they pledged to um, raise at least fifty thousand for us for that project. And we've got a lot of grants um, that we're, that we're pursuing that we've used in the past. And we just need to make sure we have a final estimate to be able to give them.
Thank you.
Good luck with that.
That's, thank you.
That's a chance to change.
Yes.
Anything else?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Mitch.
Thanks for giving us a second to talk here. I just moved back from uh, Phoenix, Arizona. My family's farmed here for probably a hundred years and I I chose to retire. Or Brad, Richard, Mitch, you know, I always see the taxes going up all the time. I'm, I'm wondering what you guys are doing with the budget. I understand you gotta pay taxes. I'm for paying taxes, but I'm getting ready to build a new house. And I don't know that I want to build a house for, to see taxes going up seventeen percent every year, every other year, as you know, I can build it out on the farm and not build in town. I I don't know what you guys are doing when it comes to the budget. And the other thing that concerns me when I read in the paper about considering putting trailer parks back in this town, that that really scares me because I, when I just moved from Phoenix, we had a huge homeless issue. Not the trailer parks or your creed homelessness, but I had a hard time selling my house just because homeless moved in and no offense, but I don't want to be living next to a trailer park and and uh, I don't see how that helps any city grow very much. Um, just a couple of things I noticed when I went back, like the Baby Brothers down on Oregon Street when they're, when it's raining and they're creeping, they're driving in and out, the construction staff mow in front of the police station is is that, is that property rezoned for that kind of use?
I'm not sure about that. At this time, I haven't had, I haven't had that chance to look into that quite yet.
Okay, because that's, that's, it's a huge mess. And I, I think that ones wanting to put the trailer park in, is that, that correct? So I mean, those, those are my concerns. You know, it's, why would I want to build a house here if my taxes are gonna go up every year and if that's like another, I understand you have to raise taxes. Yeah, that's your only chance to get money. I, I get it, but I'd like to see what other remedies are possible rather than every year each raise the taxes.
Um, I would encourage you, I mean, obviously we're, we're on the, we're on the end of this process, but we've had what, three or four meetings, commission meetings where that's what we discussed and and it used to be that shops would be um, athletes would shut the meeting down and go to a workshop and discuss the budget. Um, this year we changed and it was the last two meetings, three, I can't even count. We did the discussion in an open meeting. And so it's a great way for anybody to listen. You could go back. It's all on YouTube. You could go back and look at the last ones and Brad goes over everything. Um, but expenses we have, everybody's going through that. And so it gives, and it's a pretty hefty thing to to take in. I mean, it's, it's a lot of knowledge, a lot of information. Um, but between doing that and then going straight to to Brad, who is kind of gatekeeper of the budget. I mean, he gets all the data and everything from the department heads, but he's the one that fits things in. Best tools that can, you can hope.
Okay. Understand my concerns building a new home here. I always go up and taxes go up every year. I'm gonna fix budget. This, this will be tough for me. Yeah, so.
I get it. Thank you, Mitch. I appreciate it.
Some time for the clock to ring. Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Brad, is there anything that you wanted to? Patrick, I thought you were gonna talk. Drive by. Um.
I have nothing there. No.
I would um, entertain a motion.
Now make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Moving second to approve the consent agenda as presented, any further discussion? If not, done.
Well, there.
All right.
Hi.
All right.
Motion passed five zero. Nothing on the old business, moving on to new. This is the twenty twenty six budget discussion. Brad, before yours.
Yeah, so I believe we've had a, had a few talks. I said I'd request it done so I can share my screen real quick. Let me get back to that. We're going to share a bunch of workbook yet again. Should come up out there. We don't want a larger TV, but and so in the last few um, budget discussions that we've had, we've gone over what I've tried to focus on here is what does affect the property tax budget. And so the admin tax budget, which should be the general fund, it'd be the library. That is the debt, debt service, although we don't have any uh, money that goes to debt service. It is um, employee benefits and parks and a rack. And so what I have done here, we have gone through, I think we had a good discussion last time about our C I P. I was instructed to bring back multiple scenarios. I worked through the budget quite a bit here and and what I've come up with so far is if we look back at let's see here, commission update. So if we look back to what we talked about at this last meeting, um, especially with our C I P with parks and rec, and I'll get to what I have on the screen in a minute. But with parks and rec, I don't have a lot of information on what I need to do there as far as the floors go. I, I do agree that the floors do need done, something needs done with those. But I need to have more information, especially when it's affecting people's property tax. But I, I'm hesitant to throw just an arbitrary number that I don't know anything about. And so that's why, especially with the C I P, I've taken a lot of that out for twenty twenty six. Um, what I had left in there would be the um, that'd be the software for downstairs. The, the, it leaves a lot of things that affect people's property tax. Be the software for the um, administration. You know, the police cars, and what I'm trying to do there is trying to bring some kind of level of funding there. While we're not trying to fund, you know, sixty thousand dollars is about what it costs to get a new police car. And so I, I really don't want to have a time where we're funding sixty thousand one year, zero the next. Come back and then we're gonna do another sixty thousand. What I'm trying to do is bring a lot of level funding to what we're doing here with our budget. And so what I've done here is I'm, I'm funding about thirty thousand dollars a year into that C I P to pay for those police cars. And that way you just, it lets that be level. That way we're not seeing huge increases and decreases. It just, it does, it just brings stability to the budget. Uh, similar with uh, software upgrades. And so for the administration, you know, last year we had to um, buy a server, for example, which is something that we probably should have done sooner than what we did. Um, as everybody knows, you know, with technology advancing the way it does, if you don't advance your technology, it leaves you vulnerable to cyber attacks, things like that. But to make sure that you, that you're up to date on your equipment. And then that's just five thousand dollars a year. Once again, bringing stability to that budget. That way when those things come up, you know, we have the money there to do that. Instead of just trying to say, okay, well, we need a, I can't remember what the server was last year. It wasn't horribly expensive, but it's still an expense. Yeah. And so those are the types of things that I funded here within this budget. And so what I've come up with is in the admin, we have about a twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty four dollar surplus as far as the revenue neutral number from last year went. And library, library is, the way that the library is funded is the city commission sets a mill levy cap. Now, the library board itself is completely separate from the city. They set their own budget. And so as long as they're within their mill levy cap, if they bring back something to us that is um, is, is an increase, you know, they, they're able to set their own budget as long as they're within their mill levy cap. Right now, the mill levy cap is set at seven point five mils. And so they have brought in, brought back an increase this year uh, for what they have uh, what they have is thirty thousand nine hundred and eighty two dollars for a uh, increase for the library. And you know, I think that I had a really good discussion with Aaron and um, it was Karen, sorry, from, from the board. And I went down and I met with them to see kind of some of the things that they face on a degree basis. Because what I thought to myself is that, you know, we have a lot of uh, since the two boards are kind of separate here, although we, although we interact as far as you know, at budget time especially, we interact quite a bit. You know, Aaron does a good job coming in, giving us updates about what the library is doing. You know, I want to see what their challenges were, especially with their own building, you know, that they have. They have a lot of building maintenance challenges that they face, just like anybody else. They have personnel challenges. You know, funding things like um, their employee benefits, you know, and that's one of the things that we struggle with here at the city is funding our employee benefits. Which, you know, involves a struggle, I think, with any, you know, large business. Um. And so I went down there, I met with them, went through the building really well. They did a really good job explaining you know, what the challenges were, sent me a lot of information as far as what their budget looks like, kind of, it's kind of some of the things that they need. And what we have to remember is that the library is always gonna need at least one dollar more from the city because we're only about half of what their, a little over, I'd say, of what their budget actually is. The rest of their budget does come from a library grant to the state. I believe that's current. And we gotta make sure that we're allowing them to get that library grant because that, that is really almost half, half of their funding. And so it, it's always a challenge. It's kind of the way the libraries and cities are set up are kind of, it's kind of strange sometimes. Difficult to understand, but now that I understand it a little bit better, now that I understand what the library is going through a little bit better. Um, I, I, I think just that communication helps out quite a bit. And you know, we can continue to move forward from there. Employee benefits as it were, that also affects a budget. Um. What I've come up with this year, and this is just the increase that we've had in health insurance. Right now, we're running about a fifteen thousand four hundred and fifteen dollar deficit. From what I can figure as far as that means, we'll need a little bit more property tax there. Um. Parks and Rec. And the big, one of the big things of Parks and Rec is one of I am funding a few things through Parks and Rec for the C I P. We didn't pay for a new parks tracker this year. We ordered a new parks tracker this year out of the C I P. And what I, we need to do is make sure that we're refunding that money back into the capital improvement plan. Have thirty five hundred out of Parks and Rec, have thirty five hundred out of water. Water uses that quite a bit. This, we use that for uh, seating lawns and things like that, large areas after we have big digs. Um, I know we use it for delicate properties to mow. We use it quite a bit out of the water plant to mow. That's why I'm taking it out of water in the park somewhere. And, and of course, they use that tracker quite a bit out of the ball field. And so that's one of the things, a thirty five hundred dollars out of there. I'm also funding five thousand dollars a year um, out of Parks and Rec to go towards mower replacement. The mowers are something that, and once again, this is something that I feel like that we, you know, we should be doing instead of trying to buy two mowers every four years, for example. And it costs about ten thousand dollars, somewhere around there, commercial type that we use zero terms. And they usually cost somewhere around ten thousand dollars. Um, instead of trying to budget twenty thousand dollars every three or four years, now if we budget five thousand dollars a year and replace a mower every two years, that might, might be a better solution for us. You know, we'll just kind of rotate the oldest mowers out. You know, maybe get rid of them while you still have some value. A lot of them those that we have are just parts. They're just sitting out in a quonset right now. They're not worth anything, you know? Some of these old, old, and some of them probably still have some value. It'd be nice to get rid of them on auction instead of just letting them, you know, rot out at a quonset building. So that's kind of my idea there. Other than that, there's nothing as far as Parks and Rec goes in the C I P. It's still running a thirty thousand six hundred and ninety three dollar deficit. And that's due mostly to transfers from the pool. To the pool. Usually we would take that out of, say, water. We used to take that out of the general fund as well. It doesn't really matter since both affect the property tax rate. I moved the general fund to Parks and Rec. But looking at the pool's budget for next year, especially with some of the larger expenses that we have, the water fund can't afford to transfer any money to the pool for next year. And so there's another forty thousand dollar transfer to the pool, but that's just to keep the pool going. You know, pools inherently lose money. Now, we, we can't charge enough at the gate to, to cover expenses, for example. Um. And so what the way that we make that work is that we transfer money from certain funds to the pool just to make the pool operate. And, and that is, you know, just an unfortunate, you know, reality of running pools. But it, it's a great public service. I think the community really does enjoy having the pool. You know, something that I think everybody can agree with. I know that I think that they built that new pool in the late nineties, early two thousands. I don't exactly remember. I think it's late nineties. I hate. And you know, it is something that when you see those come up on balancing communities, communities usually do vote to have a pool in their community because it's a nice amenity to have. It's good to have something for kids to do. And so when you see a deficit like that in Parks and Rec, it's due just to having to move some transfers to Parks and Rec in order to make this budget work. And the reason that had to be done was because one of the biggest problems that we have, and I think, you know, universally, I hear it all the time. You know, as far as complaints go that come in, and I hate to call them complaints. These are things that are happening in, in the city that people see that they need to report. You know, so calling any complaint is a negative, I think, right? Well, they're just complaining. You know, that's not true. They're seeing something that needs to be fixed and they, and they're reporting it to us to fix it. And so it's more of a concern when a complaint, like I said, I hate calling them a complaint, but street funding was one of the things that I really did need to fix. And so one, one of the things that I can do with this budget especially was I had to move a lot of salaries around in order to fix a street funding. And so and I, I'll get to that here in a minute, up, up on the screen. It's really tough to see, guys. I, I'm really sorry about that. I need to get a bigger screen up here so people could see that better. But um, I really did need to fix a street funding because I know that's one of the things that we face as a community, conditioned poppers, curbs, gutters. I mean, it, it really does get, it really does get quite extensive. In the last couple of years, we've actually been running a budget deficit in the street, in the street department. I'll kind of get into that here in a minute. Um. But kind of right now, we're running a total deficit as far as our budget goes above revenue neutral. Uh, sixty, so we need sixty four thousand dollars, uh, sixty four thousand two hundred and six dollars more than what we needed last year in order, in property tax in order to make this budget work. Um. And that's what the C I P, that's what funding the C I P with the weight is right now. And so I, and I'll get to that, of course, here in a minute as well. And so what that equals, what it equals to is about what I have it down here as is going to be about a four point eight five percent increase over last year's budget. Um, one of the questions that I have left here, this year also did spend some money on um, some engineering for the housing projects that's going on out in Rooney Park right now. That was seventy seven thousand dollars out of the C I P. I've budgeted to take that back at, to take that out of um, administration right now. But what I'd like to know and the question that I still have is if we can take that, if we could refund that money out of the industrial fund, which is the quarter cent sales, certainly. Um. That's for economic development. I have a question to our bond attorney on that. I have not heard back yet. Right now, I'm just assuming that we're going to be refunding that out of the, out of administration, which is out of a general fund. And so that, that's why, there's a couple of different numbers here. It's four point eight five percent without refunding out of there. It's three point six time without it. And so those are the two numbers that we're looking at as far as increases go. Um, it's fifteen thousand four hundred and sixty, sixty four thousand two oh six. And so those are that, that's kind of what I'm talking about here. And we'll get back into what, what I want to discuss here with the twenty twenty six budget workbook. Um, what, what I'm looking at here is Um what I, what I'm looking at here is. This is a general fund that I have up on the screen right now, it's really tough to see, I do apologize for that. But right now, last year, the twenty twenty-five budget, we had a total millerby rate of fourteen point three eight eight. The way I have it this year for a few different reasons, even though I had to move a lot of administration costs back into administration. Like, say, we had a lot of, we had a lot of administration costs spread out over different funds. And so we had some of my salary coming out of, like, say, water, uh sewer street, for example. And what I've done, I've moved, like, say, City Park, myself, everything back into administration. Just to try to free up some money for the street fund. Because like I said, that was one of the, one of the major things that I wanted to make sure that we were able to. Uh fix as far as was the street funding so we could, you know, do some good to the streets of Hiawatha. And so what I've done here, it's a little bit of a decrease, and so we're back at a thirteen point three four nine mils, however. With the increased valuations that we've had, our total expenditures. Have gone up from. One point one, one million one hundred and thirty thousand four oh four. Has to be because of the, yeah, okay. Sorry about that, it is, it's due to a, a cash carryover that you have to do on the state budget form, and so. The total expenditure that we have right now is one, one million six hundred and eighty-two dollars and seven hundred and seven, seven hundred and nineteen. One million six hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars out of the general fund. Like I said, your millerby rate goes from fourteen point three eight eight to thirteen point three four nine. Um if you go to. The library. Currently, they're going to need two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, seven hundred and twenty-seven, in order to fund the budget that they've given us. That puts them at six point four seven three mils. Uh as opposed to five point six two six from last year. Industrial fund is something I'd like to talk about, I have Brett McHalemore here. From HEFFIT to kind of talk about some of the industrial fund fundings. Um and just kind of go over some of the things that, that that HEFFIT does for the city of Hiawatha. Um normally, we would take that HEFFIT funding out of the general fund. Now that we've paid off our industrial fund, which would have been, I believe, uh cooking company or crosswinds. And I think it was, and that wasn't cook.
Hemisphere.
Hemisphere, yes, now that we've paid those two off, we have that entirety of that core sales tax. That brings in about two hundred, and I I have a budget of about two hundred and ten thousand dollars. That we can use towards uh economic development here in Hiawatha, really is a good opportunity that uh. Uh it, that does sunset in twenty thirty-five, like course and sales tax does, that gives us about nine years. Of good funding opportunity here to really hopefully make some good impact. Uh on some economic development here in Hiawatha. I'm gonna allow McHale to come up for just a second and talk about, you know, kind of what HEFFIT does and. Know what, what some of the plans are and what, what we can expect, I'll turn it over to you real quick.
Well, thank you for um asking me to come speak. Um as Brett said, um there's a lot of things that we've been doing for the community for economic development for the last forty, some of those that HEFFIT has been. Um been in existence long before, before I got here, nine years ago, but some of the big projects Brad mentioned that HEFFIT has. Uh been a part of is helping to recruit some of those largest employers to our area. And also helped many of our entrepreneurs and our smallest businesses to start or to grow. So one of the things that we do is we are the connection branch with Kansas Department of Commerce for economic development. So that person is me, so anytime there's a new grant that's available. Then advantageous for our community, for business owners or other nonprofits or organizations. Um we're the people who receive that communication, receive the training on it, become the point of contact for the communities. Um for example, in the last, two and four, we've um been able to act as a subgranted for some of the state grants. Um essentially, the state one-to-one contact, uh instead of separate businesses applying for it, so all those. Um through our office in this case, and we've uh been able to distribute uh just under a hundred thousand dollars in the last four years. Um to different organizations or businesses in that, in fact, um one of those businesses started in part because of that grant, and the others were. Existing organizations that were able to add new services or improve the businesses or expand. Um so business recruitment and, and business retention are really two of our biggest focuses. So we want to keep the businesses we have, we want to get new businesses here. Um we have all of these small groups that we offer to businesses and communities as well. I've seen a facade grant to help business owners improve the experience of the, of their buildings. Um as well as we have another grant that helps to recruit uh individuals from the trades professions to hire for those jobs that we really need. And so um if you look back several, well, four years ago, to five years ago, to COVID. One of the things that we did locally with our funding was to create the Brown County um COVID grant. And essentially what it was is for businesses countywide, um small businesses who had to shut down. Um at that time, and the stores were closed, and we were receiving no revenue. And this, the federal funding was available yet, and so we were trying to act quickly to. Help those businesses still upload um into that federal funding can available, so we gave forty thousand dollars out to forty, well, thirty thousand total. Um to funding businesses uh in Bell County, so those are just some of the services we provide. I think the, um, so that's true right now is in, guy, it was the housing project. And what's going on right now, and that was born out of several years ago. Behind the scenes, we are actively recruiting businesses to hire. And seeing time and time and time again is that Hiawatha is a great place for some of the businesses. They are in a great position, close proximity to Kansas City to Almont, Topeka, St. Joe, great Hyatt, as well. And really great for ag companies with the, foreign sort of, sort of. Uh that we have, and there's some really huge ag projects right now that the state of Kansas is really trying to recruit for, and they love it. They'll come to visit Hiawatha, they've considered similar areas. Things that consistently gets us thrown out or to the bottom of the piles that we don't have for people who live, so it's. Hard to get businesses to come here, um when it's very apparent that there wasn't housing, they're just. And so that, in addition to some of our current businesses who had let us know struggles in recruitment, but they went to housing as well. We're going to start pursuing housing, um a housing project, we have. In twenty twenty-one, but at the same time, um housing became available for moderate income housing. And so we did a lot of legwork in trying to figure out, how does the city even get in a position to be able to, because we can't do that. Okay, and requirements are that us to be in the city, um but at the time, no one was familiar, neither had a go about it, so. Took a lot of that legwork and figured that process out and. At that time, we were pretty closely with the city to do a lot of the front end, that's what the housing studies that we paid for to. To be completed, um so that we were eligible, so those are just some of the things. Um that we've done to try to help the city grow, thrive, not just remain, but that will continue to thrive. Um the housing, um continues to support that, um as I'm sure you've talked about, the, the next round is open and. Um application submitted um by the city, and we're supporting that project behind the shoulders as well. We've supported paying for the, you know, architecture fees for that, for the drawings to be done. Um that, so that is a major player in a lot of this, obviously, because everything kind of rests upon the success of that as far as businesses. Um being able to come in Hiawatha, and so. Um that's our primary focus, um but not the only one, but it's definitely the one that is getting a lot of our attention right now.
And so with HEFFIT, like I said, we, we used to fund them out of the general fund, which would affect everybody's property tax. I have moved that to the um industrial fund, come out of that quarter cent sales tax for uh. For economic development, they have asked for an increase this year from twenty-five thousand to thirty-five thousand. That's what I have in there, that's what I have in the um industrial fund at this time. Um and so that, that is where HEFFIT is being, if you don't, if you do not see it in the general fund. That is why, it is because we have paid those uh bonds off, and that we are taking that out of um. The, or we're taking out of the industrial fund now. Any questions?
How many properties do you have left to sell?
We are down to actually four lots on Aztec, um Aztec Court, I believe, it's second in Aztec. Um the rest of them have all either sold or done to businesses or homes to be built, so there's four left, but they're two adjacent. So a pair of two and a pair of two, and those are residential.
Yeah. What makes the grant application look better, I mean, you can't have just houses that are empty, like, is it? Like, like what we're doing out here, where, hey, we have land and it's ready to build on, or what, what can we do to make the grant application look better? If you're saying we don't have houses, well, I mean, there can't be a lot of towns out there, cities that have just. Open houses that are built already, so there has to be something more to that, I would think, but.
Yeah, so we've sat in on, um we've applied, as, as you know, multiple times for the, the housing land already. And now that we've seen, each time we have been involved in conversations with representatives from the state that have given us feedback as to. Selected and given us pointers on things to improve for next time that would increase our chances. And so a lot of it is essentially being able to show that if they were to owe us a grant that we're ready to start moving. It's really happened then, and so that's why. Um focus on one, paying for the architecture fees for those to get done, because when you have a physical drawing showing what's gonna go in there, that shows the state. Gives them more confidence that we're really ready to do something with the money, because they have had projects they've awarded. Money to in communities that have never moved forward because they weren't prepared to do so, and so they're. Trying to make sure that the applicants they have moved now have done some of the groundwork, so that. It includes also the, the engineering fees that have been covered by the, the city previously, and just making sure that the ground is ready and. Um able to be utilized for building if they would go ahead and, if we don't have those things now, those. We've been told there were two strikes against us in the past. Anything else?
I don't think so, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Okay, so moving on to the Parks and Rec Fund. A lot of what we have here at the Parks and Rec Fund is, um like I, like I said before. A lot of, a lot of this is due to increased transfers to the pool that we haven't had in the past on the Parks and Rec Fund. Um what we had in twenty twenty-five was a millerby rate of eight point one two. What we need for this year is a millerby rate of eight point five seven two, which is, like I said, that, that is about. How much more, dollar wise voice? That would have been the uh thirty thousand nine sixty-three, six ninety-three. That was needed just to make those, to make the Parks and Rec Fund balance revenues to expenditures. And so when I come up with the final millerby rate, this is how it's done, the last. The last um piece of that puzzle, of course, is our employee benefits. Um. After I moved everybody's, after I, I figured out transfers, I have our health insurance increasing by ten percent. We've had some large increases over the last few years as far as health insurance went. Uh right now, I have a ten percent increase, four hundred and seventy-four thousand four hundred and eight is what I have budgeted next year for health insurance. Uh we need, what's the millerby rate for um? For those, we, we were right around nine last year, we're, we're at nine point four oh two this year. And this brings our total millerby rate to thirty-seven point seven nine six, which is a slight increase from last year. From thirty-seven point six oh six. Um and so that's how I came up with the millerby rate, all those numbers combined, of course, like I said, um. There, there are some things that, uh property tax can go towards like debt service, but we don't do that. Debt service here is just money in, money out, so we transfer, like, say, from the sewer fund, from the water fund. Wherever those bonds have been taken out of, that's where we transfer, is where we transfer from. Um moving into some of the other funds, like I said, last year, especially with the special highway fund. It's pretty easy to see why um I thought this is, you know, really needed some work here. As far as revenues and expenditures went. Our revenue totals now in twenty twenty, for the twenty twenty-five budget was four hundred and seventy-four thousand three seventy. And our expenditure total was four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, uh set, uh seven. Uh four hundred and eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars, and so like, like I said, we're running a budgeted deficit in that fund. This next year, what I've done, I've moved a lot of uh personnel expenditures around. I have a total of a new of five hundred four thousand six seventy, and I also have total expenditures of five hundred and four thousand six seventy. And so I brought balance back to that fund, and what this does, it leaves us around about, let's say. A hundred thousand dollars in the um. In that fund that we can use towards the streets, now we also have in special streets, something I'd like to talk about. Special streets is a asset sales tax that we're bringing in for the concrete street project, and so that brings in a rebound. I, that brings about around four hundred thousand dollars a year. We have excess money that's left over in that, in that fund every year, uh around eighty, eighty-five thousand dollars. Some of that money is gonna go, some of that money is going to have to go towards debt service. Going towards bond interest, and I have figured that in, so around eighty-five thousand dollars that we can put towards the streets there as well. And so what I'd really like to do is take that roughly a hundred thousand that we have there for um the street fund, take those eighty-five thousand dollars that we have. In this fund, and start putting that towards the streets of Hiawatha, you know, getting something done, getting, getting asphalt on the streets, getting. Poles filled, streets fixed, I, I think that's, you know, one of the main, main things that I hear from the public. Is the condition of the streets here in town, I have done some work, you know, I had a public works director look at the two remaining brick street. You know, blocks that we have, which is Sixth and Seventh Street, uh South Sixth, South Seventh, right in front of City Hall here. One block up, you know, we, something, we need to do something with these brick streets, I'm looking for a solution for that. Right now, the solution that I got from Atkinson wasn't, it wasn't, I would say, a great one, it was about if we. Put bricks up and just one block at a time would be about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars just to do one block. And so I, I think of maybe more economic, economic ways, I really would like to reach out to some more of the towns surrounding. For city those brick streets, city could those brick streets, see how they're doing, try to figure out how we do this. You know, we've done the section in front of the post office, um beyond Hiawatha Auditorium, that looks really nice, but. You know, I, I don't want to stop there, and so I am still working on that, just, you know, to get that out there and let everybody know. We had, like I said, we've reached out to multiple cities, we heard back from Atkinson. That's, that's kind of what they're possible, that was hiring somebody to come in and do it.
Um but I thought that last meeting, sorry, but I thought that number was almost double that, the last couple meetings.
Uh I don't.
It's like a hundred and sixty thousand, not eighty.
What's that?
The leftover money from the tax by the time we paid our bond.
Uh no, it's about eighty-five thousand is what I have, well, it's going to be about a hundred and, I think, I think maybe I had figured. I, I'm fearing, fairly conservative on the uh budgeting for the city sales tax. We've been getting more money on that, you know, coming in, um I've been slowly bringing that up. I brought that up ten thousand dollars this year, I have four hundred thousand dollars coming in. You know, last twenty twenty-five projected, I have four thirteen, one fifty-two, I know it's a little bit. My budget is a little bit below the projection, but I just want to make sure that I'm, you know, we don't run a deficit in that. Um fund, in that budget either, I'm trying to be as conservative. Um, fun in that budget either, I'm trying to be as conservative as I, as I can bringing that up. But like I said, eighty five thousand, about a hundred eighty five thousand towards streets is about what. We could, what I think that we could see.
Hundred and eighty five thousand?
Yeah.
I thought you said eighty.
So eighty five thousand out of this fund, a hundred thousand out of the street.
Okay.
Yeah, and so may- maybe that's why, maybe that's why.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So are we, uh, we've also talked about whether we wanna pay down the debt of the streets, we're gonna be financing for the next thirty years. Cause that's gonna be pretty important to get that paid off early, so I'd. Just be mindful that we, I don't know what we need to do on that, but I'd say at least half of our sales tax should be going towards that. Towards that debt to get it paid for before thirty year, and I don't know if we have to vote on that or how we need to do that, but. We've talked about that a couple of times, but it sounds like. Kind of just said that we weren't looking at doing that, so.
When we can, I mean, that that is something that we can talk about right now if you'd like, and, but, I, if we would. I think that paying afterwards, um, I I mean, I think that's reasonable thing to ask. I don't know if anybody else has any opinion on that.
Well, I think you could do it a little bit every year, look at emergencies and things that need to be fixed, but. I mean, we need at least a lot for, I would say, half of that to get that paid down, it'd be. I think you need to get it paid off in twenty years, not thirty, I would, we sure don't wanna be replacing roads. That we're still paying on in thirty years, so, I know it's not as much fun, but. I think it's gonna be important to get that paid off quick.
I mean, I like the the caveat you said, those we look at each year on where we at, if there's some emergencies come up we don't know about. You know, always having to have that flexibility.
As long as we're not paying by the call date, that could be okay.
Well, we'll have to, we'll have to look at the call date on the bonds to make sure that we're not. That we won't pay it off before that day, cause we'll get penalized for it, but I don't believe they're paying, uh, paying a little extra towards that shit.
I think it was seven years, wasn't it?
Yeah, something like that, so.
It will probably depend on all your extras upfront, basically, so, but it is important to get it paid down quick. So I guess that's just something that we don't want to fall through the cracks, you know, every year, if we do something like. If we say, well, we're, we're gonna look at emergencies, then everything turns into emergency and and then we're still paying on in thirty years, so I don't know what we need to do to make sure that. This is brought up every year, or.
Or what I could do here, like I said, um, I could allocate a little bit more money towards uh bond and interest out of this fund. And put, like, say, that'd be, yeah, forty two thousand five hundred towards, uh, I think that's just. Got that, I just have that as capital, right, that would get to the street, forty two thousand five hundred to bond and interest. Would that be something that?
Well, I mean, I think the smartest thing to do probably would be to talk to our bond, bonding agency and see what we're gonna get the best bang for the buck for too. I mean, there might be. I don't, those are structured different than what I'm used to, but.
Yeah.
It would be smart to say, if we were paying eighty thousand, and then come back with us and say, hey, if we not, if we pay. You know, all of our excess tax for the first ten years, we'll have it paid for, and it will save the commission for the city. Uh, you know, one point five million dollars, or whatever the case may be, but I mean, those guys know how they're structured and. If we're not for sure on when we can even pay it off by, those are the things that we need to find out.
Okay.
So I think we need to get more information on that.
Okay.
And then, as well as the, um, the economic. Growth tax as well, if we have nine years left on that, we need to have a. A serious plan on what we're gonna do with that, I think. I mean, that's a substantial amount of money that we could do something with, if, if we have a big project that we need to.
Well, it's gotta be used for economic development, though.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
I mean, but we don't, you you might have a big project that we need to do, and we could pay for it, so. But we, I just don't wanna go every year and kind of nibble at this, this large sum of money that we could have. Versus maybe we need to save it and and do something. That we really need to do. I I just, I don't feel like there's much communication with how we're gonna handle that, so I think we need to definitely brainstorm on how we wanna. Spend those funds moving forward.
Okay. Debt service is a pretty easy fund, that's just, you know, that's just money in, money out, we don't allocate any property tax to that at all. Um. The next one is History Center, the only thing I'd like to point out with the History Center, is I'm taking. The elevator upgrade that wasn't the general fund out of the History Center, we have quite a fund balance there. So that was gonna be right around twenty five thousand dollars, that was allocated towards that. I'm taking that out of the History Center now, kind of spend out a little bit of that fund balance that we do have there, and and that will be fine. Um. The next, I I. Municipal court bond, water treatment plant. Uh, one thing I would like to point out, post lantern, that's ninety two thousand dollars that's left in there, I think I've mentioned this before. I would really like to spend that money, uh, get some more bases made, we have a move for those bases. Find a foundry that will make those bases for us, that way if they continue to get hit by cars, cause it does happen once in a while, you know. We've been lucky the past couple of years that it hasn't happened as often. But we wanna make sure that we're able to replace when that does happen, you know, fix some of the lights that are leaning now, that's something that we've been looking into. As far as how to fix those, they used an epoxy before, uh, it it failed, so we need to figure out a better method for it. Um, are those LED now? Or not, well, LED yes. Well, it's entirely LED, yes. So we did that conversion a few years back.
What's it cost to make the bases now, or what did we pay for the bases?
It, it just depended on how many you had made, and so I know that at one point we had a quote. That was any, anywhere from a thousand dollars a base, if you had one or two, one to three made. To like three hundred and some dollars a a base, if you had like thirty made.
Hmm.
And so the more they have, the, uh, they're made out of cast iron, actually, yeah. Um, and so. The more you buy in quantity, the the more they, the more you give, sometimes it makes sense to do that. I don't know, we need to have thirty bases made necessarily, but we may, I mean, you you wanna plan for the future as much as possible. Other than that, it's just like three inch pipe and two and a half inch pipe, and some covers is pretty easy to put together. But we wanna make sure that we have spare parts to make sure that that system is looking as good as possible. Um, and so we do have ninety two thousand dollars left in that fund that we need to. Spend to close that fund out, same one, water treatment plant, it's a lot less, water treatment plant fund. Has, it doesn't show here, but it has right around three thousand dollars left in it, that we need to spend out of it to close that fund out. The next really big one is storm water, we bring in about seven, um. We bring in about seventy, seventy eight thousand dollars a year, charges to users in that. Storm water fund, this is something that I was talking about today, um. We have a lot of storm water problems in town, I know we we're dealing with, we need to finish up the project on Third Street right now. But I think we're just waiting for some inlet boxes for it. We have Second Street, you know, that where a pond's up, where they're second in Oregon every time. There's some, I'd like to get that problem that we fix this year as well, and we should have, we have the money in the. Budget this year to do that, uh, seventy thousand dollars a year, that can go towards, you know, many different areas in town that we feel like. Have storm water problems, that can also go to carbon gathering, no, it doesn't go very far with carbon gathering. But I've been fixing, trying to fix some alley entrances, and the worst parts of the carbon gathering that we can find is while we've been doing. But I'd like to get some sort of a dedicated plan toward at least making sense out of that, not just. Replacing a curb over here and a curb over there and trying to, you know, do a piece meal like that, but actually. Kind of have a dedicated plan with carbon gutter to start tackling some of those problems. Um, pool for. And so that's kind of my idea of a storm water, I don't have, I don't have a storm water fund as far as uh C I P goes. I have, it's easier to spread that money out of the fund itself. Uh, pool. Like I said, total revenues, hundred and seventeen thousand seven fifty. Expenses, a hundred and fifty thousand three eighty eight, the reason that it looks like that is we budget for. Just to be open like it's open every day, every year, and it and it never is, and so. Our actual expenditures only come in about sixty six percent of what we have a budget. And so that's why we don't, and and especially when I'm dealing with, uh, people's pocket tax money. I don't wanna budget an extra forty thousand dollars that I know we're not going to spend. You know, that's just going to hit, you know, it's gonna hit everybody's budget at their house, that's why those two numbers are different. Like I said, we budget, that's just a little short explanation why we do it that way, um, water fund. This, these are, uh, charges to users, I have. One million twenty nine thousand nine hundred and five, it's the same in expenditures, those two funds always even out. Same in sewer fund. Um. And so for sewer, it's right around one. One million, let's see. One million one hundred and ninety one thousand. It's going to be the same numbers going in and out there too. And so it is a little bit more in sewer than it is in water, a lot of sewer fund goes towards bond and interest. This is our I and I problem that we've been having in town, we were just completing one project north of town, we have one. Two phases of that project left, then one major phase. Um, a lot of that money goes towards bond and interest, we just put new water meters in town. As well, that's going to, hopefully, the reason why I'm not proposing any kind of rate increase. I wanna see what those new water meters do before, eh, before I do any kind of rate increase, and that's just to keep. That's just to keep the city from really trying to. If our new water meters are catching that much more water, and increasing people and increasing our revenue that much, I'd like to see those numbers come in first. But I don't wanna, I don't wanna say, okay, we're gonna increase our revenue there, plus, we're going to do a water rate increase. Where, as as of right now, it is unnecessary. You know, I'd really like to see where that goes, I know we have another project coming up with sewer. Um, but I'd like to see where those revenue, where those rates come out, or those revenues come out from the water meters first, before we do anything there. Um. The last. Big fund we have is airport, uh, airport doesn't really make, we don't charge a lot for the airport, we have a small municipal airport. It's just a very, very small budget, it's just land rent is what we what we bring in, a little bit of a hangar rental. Um, cash rent for the farm ground that we have around is what brings the revenue for the airport. Um, this is a very small budget, but. I'd like to turn it over to the commission for discussion questions, um, hopefully we can come to. A number tonight that we would like to publish for the budget hearing. And the R and R, um. The R and R hearing as well, for the September eighth meeting, and so at this point, I'm going to turn it over to the uh commission to. Ask any questions, and just discuss the budget in general.
I just have a couple of questions, you just talked about the airport.
Uh huh.
Um, we all, that one runway going on the east and west, that no one uses, they can't use. I mean, it's budget season. We need to look at either turning it into crop outland and getting some income off of it, or maintaining it so someone can land on it.
Uh huh.
And we've brought this up a couple of times, so I don't know what we need to do with that, but we're mowing it, we're paying people to mow it. It takes hours, it's time on equipment, if, if no one can land on it, then we need to turn it into crop ground and get some land, get some. Or even look at putting, I don't know, if you can put houses out there, but, I need to do something else with it besides. Mowing it when no one can use it.
And that's some of my ideas with the airport, and. You know, I've spent some time with some of the pilots that, you know, have. Planes out there, and I know there's a lot of problems, there's holes in the runway, there's, the ground's really uneven. If you go out there right now and you look at the grass, especially the middle of the runway is dead. And so that's due to a lot of uh activity going in and out, especially during the summer with the sprayers. And so what we, what we would like to do going forward into the future, especially when we go to repair one runway. Is you, we're going to have to shut one runway down in order to do that. And then, and even when, when we mow, we should be shutting the runway down, the planes aren't flying in and out while we're doing that. So the idea is to really start focusing on repairing these runways, I think we, we have quite a bit of the work, but we have a lot for now. That we bought to, uh, try to smooth runways out, take some dirt out there, even that, even that ground out, um. Plant some new grass seed, I was, and I worked with Brad Stephen Morgan last year. We were looking at some different types of grass seed what the F A recommends for runways. It's like a low creeping type grass, that doesn't grow very tall, um, so these are some of the areas that we're looking towards. Repairing these runways, making, making them usable is is really the goal here. And I, the end goal of these, we've been going through. A grant process with a K I P, that's to really make that east west runway usable. Um. Totally, that's why we, that's why we've gone through multiple different rounds of this, part of it was taxiway improvements. Part of it was runway lines, the end part of that would be hanger improvements. Right now, K, K I P, which is a grant process for the state of Kansas, it's not funding hangers, but are. Attorney that's been working with us throughout this project, this is a ninety, ninety ten grant from. Uh, the state of Kansas to the city, ninety percent state, ten percent city, um, that that would be. The kind of that last phase is to get some new hangers at the old airport, in order to make that whole area usable. And so really, really, just some of the ideas with the airport that we've been, you know, going down, I've talked. A lot of public works staff about some different ideas that we've had. Uh, different methods of mowing, for example, not doing it with a tractor so much, something that was brought up to me, fixing some of the drainage issues. Uh, just doing it with a regular mower, it takes longer, but it's less impact on the runway itself, you don't ride up the runway like. It is right now, um, and so that, that, those are some of the ideas that we have for the airport. And of course, I'm always open to other ideas for the airports as well, I mean, these are all, all these things that can be discussed.
Well, I'd need, I would, i- if that runway is open, I would call the F A and close it before we have someone land and. Damage a landing gear and then take that a prop, and then we get sued for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so.
I'm gonna toss a run that, runway up.
You said, happen out there, mostly, I think, mostly the complaint is, I know that the sprayers use our runway quite a bit when they're out there. You know, coming in and out, sometimes they'll use our runway quite a bit, really wanting to use more than anything is just level out. I mean, that that's gonna be the big thing, eh, we need to get something out there to make sure that that runway is level again, it drains up, the water drains off. Get a little bit, get some. Is, and we have the ability to do those things.
So greater work.
It's greater work, yeah. Great, greater in ways of work is really what it needs.
Then my, um, my other question was the library, they. Um. And it might be for you, or I don't know, but you said. Something along the lines of. You have to keep them in grant compliant, because that's a, what does that mean?
And so in order for the library to stay grant compliant, they have to at least get one dollar more than the city that they got the year before, is that correct? You would you, you come on up, yes, maybe you can explain this a lot better than I can.
So, yes, Brad, I kind of touched on it, um, so there are, I think there's four different. They've taken into account four different taxes that we get, and with all of those, we have to either get a dollar more, um. Per year in revenue from tax money, or we have to, okay, that's just not gonna go there, um. It has to be. Um. The budgets have an increase in the level rate over the prior school year, so, and, and. What happens when that, um, goes through, if we meet both of those qualifications. Then we keep our accreditation, we'll see Northeast Kids Library System, and that is the other significant, um. Uh, part of our revenue that we get, which Brad had also touched on, um. So if we don't meet eh, uh, either one of those. Tests, um, so there's the combined total of advert property tax, delinquent taxes, motor vehicle. Um, and then L A V T R, um, if, if the revenue from all of this is. We have an increase in how you rate that we, um, meet the qualifications to stay accredited. Um, we have to meet those tests to get money from the state, we have to get money from the state to be credited with Northeast kids library system. Um, and if we're not accredited, then we lose that on like thirty thousand dollars, um, a year from Nuckles. Um, uh, since I've started the very first year, we did not meet those tests because, um. I think it was Mike Tickle, maybe he wasn't aware of the different taxes that I went up to it, so he was including two other taxes that we get. Um, and because he was calculating with like six taxes and the state only calculated with four. Um, we ended up not getting at least a dollar more, um, and so we had to get a waiver to pass that test, but otherwise we'd usually. Um, at least get more money in revenue from the city. Um, at least get more money in revenue from the city. So. To answer your question. Yeah, okay, okay.
I'm learning myself.
Sure, sure. Yep. Um, and I've got this whole binder for both answers. But I'll sit down if not. Thank you.
Brad, just to be clear, can you say what the mill levy is that you're, that we would be at this year to fund what you said? It was a thirty-seven point seven nine?
I have thirty-seven point seven nine six as far as the mill levy to fund. Um, what, anything I have discussed up to this point, without, that would be the rate, yes.
And my share was thirty-seven, six oh six?
That's correct.
Okay.
What, what's revenue neutral thirty-four?
Revenue neutral for this year is, I have it in front of me, thirty-five point seven seven two.
Thirty-five point seven seven?
Seven, seven two, yes.
So that would only put us two point oh two mils over revenue neutral?
Yeah, yes.
If I math correctly.
So that's eight, eight percent?
Yeah, see, like I said, the actual dollar amount rate was more like four point seven five or something like that.
And then perhaps a little less if we.
So perhaps a little bit less if we, um. Oh, yeah, I have, I have that number down here. So it's four point eight five percent. As far as dollar, actual dollars go, and it's a three point six nine if we can refund out of, um, the industrial fund.
And when do you anticipate getting that answer?
I, he was, he's on vacation right now. I'm hoping by the time that we finalize the budget.
Hey, do you have any questions?
Um, my thoughts were, um. We, we have to raise taxes three quarters of a percent because, for the library. And so I don't feel that that's, um. We can't do anything about that. So I, I don't feel that we should have to eat that out of our budget. Um, my, my thoughts on this were to raise the city tax one more three quarter of a percent. Only, um. The software that. They're proposing that we use current C I P funds for that. Um, for that purchase. And then we use the three quarter of a percent or three quarter of a mil to refund our C I P fund. Moving forward over the next four years. I think that that's a very modest. Raise, and I think that it, um, also checks the box for everybody instead of just saying. We need to stay revenue neutral, um. I, the, I have talked to people that have, have been around the software. I said in the last meeting, I wasn't for sure about it. I, I, I'm not in the office, I don't know, but there are a lot of people that have said that it's, that, that it needs work and that it has been a problem. In the last couple of years. Uh, I do think that would be a good upgrade. And I was a little confused. Does that software, like, does that help our website or not? It doesn't, right? But it makes things a lot easier. For. I thought that you, you said something about like forms and stuff or something, maybe. I don't. I was a little bit confused about that.
Yes, all of that will be. Will be over here within the main cloud versus.
But that's more on your guys' side than.
We are working on the website. Do hopefully, and I'm working on it, but it's still. So, of course, my. My focus is on the true people, I have access to them, you know, those things. Um, my next focus is to be a. Whatever, the software, for instance, um, we put this a week, two weeks ago. It was a refund to a resident for sixty dollars and ninety-one cents. We, uh. We're checking them three times now. And we still have not heard back to give that sixty dollar and ninety-one cent correction. And you cannot move on to even explain that consolidation and so on. So it's always in my time. That should just actually. Correct itself when we issue that refund. You know, we, we, we refunding them, they've already cashed the check. But for some reason. When we created that check in the software, it is not shown on the bank records.
And we haven't even switched over to the cloud yet, correct?
No.
Which, when you read those, yeah.
And. That's not the my fault because they want us to charge us more to create a crosswalk, which is our charging panels. Um, they want us to pay them. The C P A we had last year created it, and it's all in an Excel, so. That they want us to pay them. I'm saying, you just teach me. Not going to be close.
That transition has been ugly for other, other cities based on the emails that you forwarded to us where it's just been.
Correct, um.
I think I saw one that said, oh, wouldn't bad, but the rest were like, it's a nightmare.
Yeah, so. Some of them forty-five months out waiting on tickets to get fixed, um, it's just not feasible. Because you're bound, I stat you.
Your, your people in there are spending a lot more time than what they need to be. So if we get that, they're, everybody will be more productive. So it's probably a good thing. I just wasn't, uh, up to speed on it, but that, that's my thoughts on it. We have about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in C I P fund. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, according to the fund balance that I had today, let me pull that up. Fund balance I had today starting out was four hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty.
But we have. There's some things going on there. A safe two hundred and fifty thousand is what I fear. So that's what I'm saying. We have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars C I P fund, that money that we basically brought in from our tax hike. Two years ago. And we have not really had a plan for that money, so. What we need to do is look at what we're going to do moving forward with that money. I'm feel comfortable taking half of that money right now, buying the software that we need. We'll ra- we can raise taxes three quarters of a mil and we'll start refunding that over the next forty years. And we'll have our, our C I P fund back to where it was, um, today. So I, I think that's just a reasonable avenue to kind of get everybody what's needed and. And start looking forward to. How we're going to run the C I P fund. This has been a big problem for the last two years since we introduced it, how we're going to do it and how we're going to run it. I don't feel like this year's the best year to raise taxes anymore than kind of what I'm, kind of what I'm, I'm proposing here. But using the funds that we have existing and refunding them over the next four years. It's, it's a small increase, but it does get the job done.
And so as far as the refunding goes into the C I P, what I had already built into the, um. General fund for this year was, like I said, refunding that, I think it's right, right on twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Is what I had refunding into that C I P to pay for that software. We, I have it in the C I P to extend that whole, whole, whole hundred and twenty-five thousand. On the revenue side of the C I P, I have that coming in at twenty-five thousand dollars a year from the general fund to refund that, I'm out. Because that is, is how I built this current budget that I'm working with.
I suppose you can buy new software piecemeal. It's probably not the best way to do it, but add on modules as you go.
You can, yes.
Does that help any at all to spread the money out, the cost down?
It could. And so what we've looked at here is we've looked at, we asked for a price that was, you know. We gave them what we had. We gave them some of the things that would be nice for us to have, like say municipal court. Uh, parks and everything like that, so they could receipt money indirectly. Instead, because the way, the way it's done now is cumbersome. I think Don could explain that better than me.
The. The municipal court, we already have. The only thing is, is that they do not receive it, but we still need to receive them. So they'll just have access to these. So it would be a separate module for that. Um, the fixed assets would be a new module where, and the inventory tracking of the city would be, uh, if you do not have any.
Code enforcement on there?
Code enforcement is on there, uh. The other one that we, we asked for the whole thing and then when they presented it. Like, oh, we find you about is a residential. Which is roughly twenty-nine thousand. We have our first, well, sixty-one, that would be, we lost that. It is definitely a long time. So the fixed assets, the inventory. Or enforcement with all the new modules. Receipt management, general ledger, payroll. Uh, both parks and that would be due to. And it would give them the option to be able to exceed it. Their structure. Currently, and. Correct me if I'm wrong, you're on the right thing to update your electronics at the. Yes, so. Going off the name of all, I mean, that was just kind of, you know, I was thinking. Their electronics or their, we're receiving in at.
Burning in nowhere. Concessions.
That, that would all be tied right into parts. And then it would hit the G L. Versus they bring cash in, we receive it in. And so.
Right.
It would just streamline. So, uh, everybody just to come to our office to sign up for things. So we'll want to get this now. And allow people to do work on something.
Well, I think we need to get that software one way or the other, and if it means taking money out of the fund balance, I'd, I'd be in favor of that.
Don, I appreciate you sending us all those emails. Um, that we can see what other communities are dealing with as far as their, their software and, and the problem. And I'm a hundred percent behind upgrading our software. And the city has to be able to. Step it up and get some answers. You spend too much time chasing your tail.
I do agree with. Even the software, because guys, when I come in on Fridays, you guys are always complaining about it. But, um. I like Brian's idea of only going up three quarter of a mil. I. I get it, we have to have money to do stuff. But I just don't think we need that much money is what we're initially we're proposing. Um. I'd like to keep it as low as possible because I don't want to pay any more taxes than I have to. Not the funnest thing to do.
Uh, I've got just over a six percent hike. That sound correct to you? Yeah, the one, one and a half, um, mils that I'm looking at, that, that's like four percent. So are you for sure that that's?
I, I use a percentage calculator that I've, uh, I don't like percentage calculators.
Revenue neutral is thirty-five point seven seven, right? Yeah.
No, I mean, why is it maybe a little bit higher than what the dollar, what, dollar amount actually is, or what have you talked about? Are you talking about mill levy or dollars?
I was just using mill levy numbers.
Mill levy might be slightly higher than what the, uh, actual dollar amount is.
I'm just curious, you know, like I said, you proposed the, the thirty-seven point six, which is going to be about two, two. The, what you said was going to be just a little bit over two mils on the revenue neutral. Brian's close to a mil, I mean, not quite.
It's one, one and a half mils when you figure in what the.
What's the library?
What the library.
Okay, um. So then when you're talking that next half mil, what are we, I hate to do this to you, but I always like to know, what is that like? What are we talking, dollar amount? I mean, what, are we, I would imagine we're not talking about that much.
It's like seventeen thousand dollars-ish.
And the only reason I'm just bringing this up, I just, when I look at the deficits and such that we have. And with what you projected, that, that allows us to do the things. I don't think anything we asked for on our. C I P plan was extravagant, excravenant, came to say it, was a lot anyway, um. I, and this is kind of a stretch. I go back to when we didn't raise utilities for several years. And then we had to whammy everybody all at once. Um, Larry Payne took that on before the next, next person came in. That's the only thing that worries me is if, if we can do minimal, then each year we don't have to have the big hikes. I mean, one and a half to two, I don't know, it's a hill I'm going to die on, but I just wonder if it's worth. If this helps it make it more bearable next year and we can keep the same level type increase. Then that's great. Obviously, we all don't have a crystal ball. We don't know what's going to happen between now and then, but.
And, and I think the only, like I explained earlier, the only other thing that I've done with this budget. Would have been tried, just tried to bring some stability toward our equipment replacement program that we're trying to implement here in the city. Right now, I'm out of three different departments that sort of affect the mill levy, so it's kind of irrelevant. But. It's eight thousand dollars a year from street water and sewer to, um. To replace vehicles when those come up to be replaced. Four thousand dollars a year out of the same three departments to replace equipment when that comes through, be replaced. Uh, obviously that equipment is, is replaced far less often than what say vehicles are. Um, the big, the big kind of number that we have here is thirty thousand dollars a year right now for police cars. And that's going to allow you to get one about every two years.
But that, uh, you said that that was going to be coming out of the police budget already, correct?
No, I, I have that coming out of the C I P.
Last, last meeting, you said coming out of the police.
No, I said it'd be coming out of the C I P.
Uh, I asked the question, unless I totally heard it wrong through the video, but I asked.
You did, you did ask the question, but we had at some point in the past when Mike was here, you used to take that just out of the police budgets. But when we started doing C I P, we started taking those types of funds out of C I P instead of just. And so we transfer out of like, say, I think I explained this at the last meeting. Anything with an aid is like, say, the capital, you know, so eighty-nine ninety is usually our capital, um, capital fund for. Within any funds of water, fifty-three, eleven, eighty-nine, ninety is a capital expense. Ninety-four, fourteen is a transfer. And so ninety-four, fourteen would be a transfer, like, I use that never to transfer into C I P. For example, then we spend the money out of the capital improvement plan. And so whether you spend it out of the police fund or whether you spend it out of C I P, it'll be the same amount of money either way. You could do it either way. If he, if we so chose to do that, we could spend it out of the just capital expense line item. You know, save thirty thousand dollars a year and do that every couple of years. But kind of the good thing about the C I P is that you bring a lot of stability into that. Say if I. I'm going to have to budget out of a capital expenditure for whatever I plan to do that year. Instead of my plan to replace a police car, I'm going to need to budget for that whole sixty thousand. If I go with the C I D, put it into that C I P, I can say, okay, well, I'm going to try to level this out. Go thirty thousand dollars a year and then I can, and, and then I can spend that money out of the capital improvement plan year two. And you're, and the money's already there. Uh, you're just kind of front loading that money. It's kind of the idea of it. And the money's already there, you're just kind of front loading that money, it's kind of the idea of it.
I do appreciate that you're starting to look for things in the long haul and that it will be more. Spread out, it's just gonna take you a few years to get to that point.
No, I, I, the, the funding of the CIP fund has been a problem since we started it. And I know it's introducing a new, a new program basically, but we have had problems funding this, and this is where all of our tax hikes are coming. So whether we like it or not, I mean, I I'm figuring six percent and then seventeen. Two years ago, I mean, we raised taxes. Almost twenty five percent. In two years. And so, yeah, you know, I look at it as this. You know, the three quarters of a mill that we're taking and the three quarters of a mill. Um, that the library is taking is a lot. And whether we like it or not. The county is gonna be going up a lot, and so is the school, and it's just gonna be, we need to be mindful of. Of everybody's tax burden. And I guess that's something that I'd like, you know, just for the library to remember too, if you're, if you're going to hike, you know, a big hike. It, it helped to give us a heads up and let us know what's going on a little bit, because this is the second year in a row that it's happened.
What is the cap on the library?
Seven point, seven point five mils, right?
And that's set by us.
That's set by the city.
In last meeting, didn't we discuss potentially? By resolution. Lowering the cap?
Yes.
I don't know, I'd like to see that considered. I'd also like to see the patrol cars, I know chief had mentioned that he was. Thinking, get rid of two, buy one and drop it down, but. I'd like to see patrol, the fleet drop down to five. Units, the chief, four patrol cars. I mean, that would help their budget tremendously. Be able to afford to upgrade their, their equipment, their radios, their. You know, I know they're really into forensics and this sort of thing, I mean, there's a whole lot of money set in those patrol cars. It's not necessary to have that many. And, and I know he agrees as well, but I think that's a priority.
And the cars are worth nothing when you're done with them. I mean, they, they're.
Let it depreciate. And set it up where we end up at five patrol cars. There's really no reason to have anymore. I mean, that's just my, my opinion on that. Um, as far as software, I'm a thousand percent behind that because we need that for the city to operate efficiently. Um, Brad, you were talking about. Um, the potential reimbursing that CIP. Out of the economic development sales tax for the housing project.
Yes.
Do you feel pretty positive about that? I mean, you're still waiting on an answer, but do you think that's gonna fly?
I'm fifty fifty on that one, I really don't have a strong feeling one way or another. Yeah, I have nothing to base what, how I feel about that off of. If we can generally fund things like engineering for housing developments, if. If we can call it economic development, then yes, I, I do feel like that's something that is economic development. Um, I, I just would really like to see that answer from our attorney before I. Say yes to that, then we have to turn around and say, well, okay, well, we can't do that, you know? And then, and then we have to hit our budget next year for that refund or, you know, wait another year to start refunding.
So if, if we were to do the one and a half, I mean, do you have any ideas? Where you would find money? To make up that difference, I mean, hopefully, if we can do the transfer like we just said, it wouldn't be quite as much you'd have to make up, but. Is that a fair enough question to ask you now?
And so we kind of, the major, um. The, the big time expenditure that we have coming out of the. CIP plan right now is what we're gonna be doing moving forward with patrol cars. And so right now, I was looking at one and a half. I'd be looking at probably cutting. You know, the funding for the patrol cars and the CIP out next year. I know that they have some, uh, I think some cameras that they need to be, that need to be replaced. You know, I think that's seventy five hundred, leave, I would leave that in there, but it would be the patrol cars that would be cut out of that.
Well, even if you're putting thirty thousand aside for the. For your patrol car, you're just gonna have half as much, we might have to wait another year to get your, the.
Yeah.
So that's, I guess, the moral story is, as far as patrol cars, I think there's a lot of. What are we gonna do with that? And then also. Our machinery in general. I've been wanting to sell a big dozer that we don't use very often for a long time and. I think we have a lot of machinery and I think we have a lot of new, nice machinery too, that. We need to start sharing a little bit and letting other departments use, or however we need to do it, but it just, we're spending a. An absorbent amount of money on machinery, I mean, a hundred thousand dollar skid loader, that's. Really big, um, so I, I think we need to look into that and revamp. How we're doing patrol cars, machinery in general. And I think that's something that we should. Look long and hard at next year and. Do a little bit of, uh, refunding our CIP for the. For the software and let's come up with a really good plan and, and not wait till budget season, and I'm not saying. I mean, we're all guilty of it probably, I mean, I, I do the same thing, it's like. Open budget season, you know, we need to be, start thinking about this stuff earlier, and so we don't have all this going on at one time. Again, you've done a great job of putting it out there, uh, way more than the last, you know, years that I've been on the commission, so I do. Thank you for doing that. But I, I think that we still have, there's a lot of meat on the bone to cut on equipment and. And, uh. You know, police cars, so. I, I just, this year is not a good year, I think, so we need to do everything we can, and I think we're checking all the boxes that we have. That we, that we can, if we're just very mindful and doing a small, um. One and a half, basically.
Did we already buy that new skid steer?
That the one with the track?
Yeah. No, they don't propose for twenty twenty six, we haven't, we have not bought anything like that.
So we can't get it. Right?
What's that?
We were not, we're not, we're unable to even get one, I think, is what the deal was, right?
Um, we had, within our current budget, it's actually in the twenty twenty six budget, but it's one of those things that can be cut out.
I'm saying, it's not even available to buy, I thought, or something, like you just haven't, like, couldn't, they didn't have one for you.
So they, they have, they have a balance there, I know that Case wanted to. Sell us one, I think it was two years ago, that they, they're really. And they're really interested in the one that we have, because I think they think that we can, they can get, you know, I think they had offered us. A good amount of money for the trade in value of it. Um, but we, it's something that, you know, we would have to look at.
We could put tracks on the old one that we have. If that's the problem.
I think that's the big idea with a track skid loader is even if, even if you put tracks on the one that you have, you still have your four points of contact. And so it, it's really the big idea here, is spreading out the road that we have across it, I know. When I used it up on, um, Miami Street when I was putting in the water main. You know, I, I had a really tough time getting, uh, getting it to look decent after it was done. You know, these are things that. It, like I said, Third Street's a good example of it, we've rented these things quite a bit. To bring them in to do finish work in people's yards, things like that. Um, they have advantages, track skid loaders have advantages. Um, but especially it's the low weight, same reason why we bought the mini excavator instead of pulling, uh. Backhoes into people's yards. Uh, we've been using the mini excavator, it's lesser impact, doesn't sink in quite as much, things like that. I mean, really, we're trying to lessen the impact on the property owner when we do have to tear up the yards because we hate doing it. And it, it's just. Last year I had to, or two years ago, I should say, somebody had just. Got their yard perfect and we had to replace or wanted service, and it was a nightmare. And so it just allows us to do an eater job, once, once the job's complete.
Another thing that would be very nice is a TV right here.
Yes.
Because everybody's turned around the whole meeting looking at that. Go to Walmart and get one, two hundred and fifty dollar seventy. And then we don't have this problem, so it'd be nice to find that. That money as well.
Christmas is coming.
Yeah, so it'd be nice to get something like that too.
I agree.
So Brad, do you know if the county is actually moving forward on these? Property tax sales?
As far as I know, yes.
So it's not just talk.
Just talk, I mean, they've gone through, eh, as far as I know, they, they filed all the paperwork for this. And from what I know, I think Andy could speak to this a little bit better than I can, but yes.
The tax foreclosure sale has been filed, there's a twenty twenty five filing. Uh, right now, they're going through the service, this is the longest part where you have to get either personal service or some kind of service on all the property owners. In addition to the publication, so it is proceeding, I don't know if it'll be done by the end of the year, I think that's kind of what everybody's looking at, but. Uh, it is on file.
It's in motion, that's great. It's great. So Brad, what do you think about Brian's proposal?
Uh, bringing, let's see, let's see what I would have to do to do that. And so the. One and a half mil, so it's. The library is going up thirty thousand nine eighty two. And. Yeah, see, we're right at thirty six thousand seven twenty eight. That's, that's right at point eight four mils. As far as, um, dollar numbers, as far as mill levy goes. Point eight four three, let's just, let's just call it point eight four mils on that one. Uh, dollar amount on that would have been, like I said, thirty thousand nine eight two. I think I had, including that, going into this, I'd had. Uh, sixty four thousand two oh six is a total deficit. So if we had just, if we had done what I had originally proposed. Uh, sixty four two. Two oh six. Minus, um. Thirty nine eight two. Meant that the city itself outside of the library would go on up thirty three thousand two eight four. Divided, once you can divide that number once again by, so we would need to cut roughly a couple thousand dollars off of that number. In order to get down to what Brian is proposing, I guess is a good way to put it. So we're looking at, you know, three thousand dollars off of that number in order to get down to what Brian is proposing.
Thank you.
You said you need to cut a couple thousand?
Yeah, like three thousand.
About lowering the tree board down to, down to a thousand instead of three thousand.
That would, that would help, yes.
That, that was their budget. In the past, not last year, but.
Yeah.
They'll probably kill me for saying that.
I put a couple of extra there just for, uh, I think some tree planning, I, I mean, I can find. I can find that kind of money within the budget itself, it's not something I have to cut out of CIP necessarily.
Alright.
Like Dave just said, I can do that while we're live here. So if you go to administration, that's. Trees, landscape, clean of us, plan our boxes, I'm sorry. You never find out what you need to. Oh. That's actually, that actually comes out of the. One other thing that I could do, this might be an easier way to do it. Since a lot of our technology is shared across, um, many different. Departments, instead of taking five thousand out of the administration department, because I believe that the tree board comes out of. The street fund, not the general fund. And so that will help the property tax, I guess, is, is what I'm trying to say, I think that line ends actually in here. Let me find it. Yeah, the remote trimming, three thousand as a, yeah.
But you said you.
Treeboard planning comes out of the street fund, but not the, what I could do is take. Instead of taking five thousand dollars a year out of administration, I could spread that money out over like, say, administration. Uh, water sewer, um. And streets. All the funds that, you know, share that technology, and that would actually give us the money that we need there. That might be, that might be an easier solution there.
Did you say you were gonna take the? The money to pay for the software or the general fund though over the last four years? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
I hear that wrong. So what? Are we gonna still use CIP money?
Well, it's general, it's general fund money refunding into the CIP. Is what, is what would do that.
Right. So it's. I guess. We, we don't, we could just look at what we're gonna be, the low, lowering the amount that we'd be refunding the CIP fund. Instead of cutting someone else's budget, is what I'm saying.
You could do that as well, yeah. You just do that by a few thousand dollars and.
I mean, yeah, just, that's all, that's all you're doing is.
Yeah.
Because again, we need to revamp or look at how we're going to move forward with the CIP. I mean, the, the tree board, I, I know you're way more involved in that, but.
So if I do that.
We are the city of beautiful maples, and at some point, we need to.
They've got a community foundation fund going right now, so they've got extra.
Extra funds.
Coming in from that.
Like Mash Day stuff or something?
Cool.
They had a last. I don't know what they got on the river.
Cool. That's good.
Seems like they're taking down a lot of soft maples right now. I just, I see tree trimmers out there cutting.
Well, they were gonna. Well, I can't speak for him, so I'm not on board anymore, they. Talked about maybe having a program to cut down some of the ash trees that got hit by amber, amber ash more. Could have some kind of a. Rebater of, and they'll help take those down, but I don't know where they're at on that.
Okay, so if we. Take some money out of the administration for the software. Um, go back to the general fund of revenue. Now we have a five thousand dollar surplus, means we need to be five thousand dollars less. And the. So. Four eighty five, three oh seven here. In quote, two one. So that would take our mill levy and the general fund to. Thirteen point two one, two one four, instead of thirteen point three four nine. And so if you add that number, thirteen point. Thirteen point two one four, the general fund. Um, add in. The six point four seven three in the library. Go to parks and rec. Eight point five seven two. And then employee benefits. Nine point four oh two. Would equal thirty seven point six six one. On the final mill levy rate there.
It's still like just under two mils.
Uh, revenue neutral, once again, is seven seven two. Our current mill levy is thirty seven point six oh six.
It's one, it's one point eight, so we would be raising the city tax just over one mil. Yeah, but the the I'm I'm taking out what the library is putting in.
Brian, two or three meetings ago. Uh you just started conversation about our salaries, the commission salaries. And you froze, so we didn't hear what you said. And the meeting had to end because we couldn't communicate with you. So I'd like to bring that up again. For you to finish the conversation, what your question was on that.
Yeah, sure. Uh I've brought this up before. I I the salaries that the commission receives are are it's. Doesn't even cover my water bill. So it's kind of, to me, it's not worth uh the the. The people even going through the work of signing the check and and all that stuff and. And it's more or less, you know, being just mindful that we're that we're doing everything we can to keep taxes low. I just, I I've never felt that. We should be paid for doing this and especially for. Uh it's a very small amount. And so if we're doing this for. If you're doing this for the hundred and fifty dollars a month, you're probably.
Don't forget the six cents.
Yeah. So I I I think that's.
Certainly not doing this for the money.
Right, no, it's.
At all.
Right.
I would have no problem with that.
You didn't even know we got paid until someone told me that.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think that's just something that that when we're raising taxes that we we should look at and just say.
It's not a lot, but it's something.
It is, but it's not. I mean, it's it's a low enough amount that. You know, it it would be five persons' checks every week or two weeks or whenever they send them out, you know, that. Month, is it monthly?
Hundred and fifty dollars and six cents.
Okay, yeah, so month, but I mean, it's still, you know, five checks where they don't have to have. Administrative time and everything else dealing with it. And so that that's my take on it. I I just, I don't think. I I've never thought that, though. I've 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 brought this up uh previous commissions before and um. But we didn't have much luck with it. But yeah, I I think that if we're raising taxes, I I don't think. I I would feel fine with. Uh not having wages for commissioners and uh. And giving it back to the residents.
Oh man.
That would be in, absolutely. Keep it in the budget.
And so let me look at that real quick.
I've worked on helicopters. I can't hear where you're standing. You said last time that it was by ordinance, so. But is this something you could just put on the agenda for next meeting and then Andy would have enough time? And we can do that. And I think we can go ahead and, I mean, it's still, again, we're not talking about. A huge amount of money, but if it passes at the next meeting, then we can adopt that into the budget on the eighth.
That's correct, yes. Because I believe, if I'm not mistaken, then once we publish, like I say, mill levy rate. We can't, we can't go above that mill levy rate, but we can double lower it if we so choose to.
Yeah, so we could lower it even more.
We can lower it even more if we so choose, so that'll give us that, it'll give us that time.
That sounds like a plan.
So we have to have a decision tonight.
Yes, while we're while we're going to publish.
Because I have to submit it to the newspaper by eleven AM tomorrow for publication.
Okay.
If at that time, you bring the mill levy down, that's false. You just can't go above.
So we're looking at a mill levy of thirty seven point six six one, so. Is that the only motion you really need right now? It's just, or how would, how would you want a motion to be written?
At a at a rate of thirty point six six one.
Hey, I would like to make a motion. Um to set the mill levy for the next year's budget at thirty. Point six six one and.
Thirty seven, yeah.
Oh, sorry. The seven point six six one and to set the twenty twenty six budget hearing for September eight.
A second.
And the revenue neutral rate hearing for September eighth as well. Brian, second, is there any further discussion? I guess the only thing I I would like people to remember when we start going through this process again next year, that when we make that initial. Um initial statement of. But that is always, to always remember that's just to give us a little bit of room to go through this whole process. And that we are not jumping to whatever huge increases. That's just part of the process and. As you can see tonight, how it played out. So I just want to remind everybody of that.
Such a beautiful process.
And I think a lot of cities set their bar right at the top. So all these budget hearings and all this conversations and all these kind of things can take place. It gives you all the wiggle room to come up with an answer. Um again, I think it got put out that we were gonna raise people's taxes like sixteen, eighteen percent. That's not the case at all. But we're required to notify the county, hey, here's our bar. This is where we wanna. We're gonna notify you, we're we're. Doing what we legally need to do, but that doesn't mean that's what we're going to do. It means that's what we're gonna work from. So.
I understand wiggle room, but seventeen percent is a lot of wiggle room. I mean, ten percent's crazy wiggle room. If if we're off our budget by ten percent, we're we're all doing something wrong. And so just because we say. Oh, we're setting the bar high, but let's be reasonable about it. And again. We've had seventeen percent increases. It's happened just two years ago.
That's true.
And so that's why we need to be mindful that. I know when um my first couple of years here, we we set the bar very low and it was pretty much what we were gonna. Do the do the budget as. And so just with that said, you know. Eight, nine percent is is a lot of wiggle room on a budget. And so. Be mindful next year that when we set that rate, that let's not do seventeen, eighteen percent because it's been done already. And so that.
Understand that, Brian.
So. Go ahead.
Okay, and and I was just going to add that I think that a lot of that large increase. Is that what can, we're 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 trying to redo how we do our C I P here at the city of Hiwatha. And you know, through this process, we've really kind of brought that into focus, you know. Eh it's it's one of those things that when we first went through that process with the C I P. You know, I really had to start working through those numbers, work with the department heads directly. Um the 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 best reason why we came up with that seventeen, eighteen percent. Now that we've had this process, we've had these good discussions. I think that we brought that C I P into focus. Um that we really wanted to make that sustainable. I feel that we've done that. Uh as far as our budget goes, um I I I I do agree with with Brian a hundred percent. You know, we need to uh be careful about how we do that, but that's kind of why that happened. You know, redoing that C I P now that we've done that. You know, we still have some work to be done on that, obviously, but. I just do not feel that the impact is gonna be that severe as far as what we report in the future. You know, unless something just catastrophic happens.
Now, I mean, we won't need as much wiggle room is what you're saying.
Well, I said, keep in mind, this is. Brad, this is your first real full year beyond have a whole grasp of the budget. I mean, you got thrown into it last time, and so this is the first time you. This is starting to be more your baby than what you adopted or what you inherited. And so. Anyway, it's it's a lengthy process, but I think that we ended at a at a good place. So is there any?
And I think if we if we keep taxes down. It'll help draw people in because they don't wanna come in here and buy a house and have to pay these ridiculous taxes. That's. And just like Richard said, you know, people live on fixed incomes. My mom lives on a fixed income. Luckily, she doesn't have any property. She's not getting that property tax, Mike. But she still has to pay all the rest of the tax.
But we can, you can also say also that, you know, we raised taxes and we also raised. Our water water rates tremendously that same year. And so. We've done a lot of raising and the water bills, twenty dollars for some of these people that only use. Forty gallons a year, you know, I know when I had my shop downtown, I'd flush the toilet three times and it cost me seventy bucks, you know, it's like that's.
Yeah.
So there there's, there's a lot of moving parts there and we just need to be. Mindful that, you know, twenty dollars to people, you know, on the end of their rent. A lot of these people don't have twenty dollars at the end of the month, so.
That hit the same time the county nailed us on the appraisals on our homes.
Twice.
Twice.
Yeah, I live in a multimillion dollar house now.
Yeah. Shall we go? Done? Motion pass five zero. Moving on to rural district number two.
So I was approached by um representatives from rural water district number two. Really what this comes down to is the rural water district wants to have a. Uh better relationship with the city of with the city of Hiwatha. Um right now, we owe their emergency backup. Um guys, uh we don't currently have an agreement. District number two to be their emergency backup. However, uh the state requires inhabitants that we are it. We still do have their meter out there. This is that we charge them um. Ninety dollars and fifty cents a month just to have that meter installed. That meter has not ran since they went off of our system quite a few years ago, probably twenty s- twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. So that's how they use any water from the city of Hiwatha. Um we've been. And so what they're asking is that we waive that monthly fee and find a way that we can work together. I know currently I I would have a. A good backup for the city of Hiwatha as far as water goes. We do have a south roof that we could turn on. But if we did turn that on, since that water is high in nitrates, K D H E would issue a do not drink order on that. Um I'd rather have a backup where people could actually drink that water. Something that we can work towards. I think that waiting, I I would recommend that we waive the five hundred ninety dollar. Uh and fifty cent monthly fee that we charge brown two and start working towards uh that end that. So I'll take any questions.
I think last time we talked about this, we didn't know. How, what what it looked like moving forward with like the emergency plan or like. The other piece of this puzzle. I mean, do you feel comfortable with wa- waiving this now before we have some type of plan with?
I do. I I think I think that we can waive this now and work towards that end. Um I I think that the technical hurdles that we have to get go through are doable. Uh we're going to have to sit down, both boards are going to have to sit down, come up with a um agreement. As to how much, like, say, the city would charge in the in in the event of an emergency. The city would have to decide, you know, what kind of equipment upgrades do we need in order to be able to even draw water from brown two. Um and so there's there's a lot left to do, but I I do feel like this is a good first step in that process. And so that 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 is why I'm recommending it at this time.
So we, they're currently paying five hundred ninety dollars and fifty cents a month. For something they're not use, they haven't used since twenty seventeen.
That's correct. That's just a meter charge that we charge anybody that has a meter hooked up. The state requires them to have that meter hooked up. And so even if, say, a resident had. A meter that they didn't use, as long as they're in the system, we charge them a minimum amount every month just to have that meter in our system.
And you're proposing to drop this, but if they start using water, would they pay for that water that they're using?
We would have to, that's why we need to figure out what rate we're going to charge them for the water that they would that they would use. Right now, we we would have no choice but to charge them the bulk rate that we charge now in our in our water rates. We need to come up, which. You know, honestly, it's probably a lot more than what they were charged the last time that they used water from us. Uh they were a very big part of our uh. Income as far as the city went, as far as uh our sales went in the water side. Ground public wholesale district number twenty seven. You know, I I don't see them coming back to the city of Hiwatha anytime in the future. I'm not gonna say never. But I I I don't see that happening currently, but I do see ways that we can mutually benefit each other. I guess is a good way to put it.
I think we need to work on our relationship with them without a doubt. I mean, they've been paying for something they're not even utilizing.
They're required to have it, though.
They're not using.
Do they have any any issues with nitrates in their water?
Not that I'm aware of. Last time I talked to their operator, they said the nitrates were, he said the nitrates were under five. I had heard a little bit about that, but still not, still not anywhere near where they're going to have to uh. But they build a water plant or anything like that or put any equipment in their facility out there in order to take those nitrates out. And so right now, I don't believe that they're very close to that. But but I don't think they have nitrate issues right now.
Could we take water in from their system through that where that meter is without adding any pumps or any kind of equipment or?
I do not believe so. I I believe that we would have to, we would have to have some kind of a. We'd have to have a little bit of engine in and get, see what the um. Hydraulics of everything are and then and then see what we would need to do. And see what that connection would need to be, whether it's at the ground commuter station itself or. We do have a lay down empty facility out north of town. We could have something there as well. There there is a line that also runs right by that facility too. Kind of see, we we need to see hydraulically where it makes the most sense and what would be the most efficient, I guess is a good way to put it.
I'm good with it, unless anybody else has any question?
Good with it. Good with it.
Mary, ready for a motion?
Anybody wants to make it?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the monthly fee of five hundred ninety dollars and fifty cents. That we currently charge Brown County, pardon me, Brown Rural Water District number two. And work with Brown Rural Water District number two on an agreement as what rates would be charged. In the case of an emergency.
I'll second.
Then moving second to waive the monthly fee of five hundred ninety dollars and fifty cents with Brown Rural Water District number two, any further discussion? Not done? Hi. Motion pass, excuse me, five zero. Communications, Brad, anything you need to elaborate on?
Nothing I need to elaborate on there. I think Don did a good job elaborating on the budget timeline and we just have the judges reporting there as well.
Okay, moving on to governing body comments, I have none. Dave?
I don't have anything.
Tom?
I don't have any.
Brian?
I don't have any.
Laura?
I would like to thank you, Brad, for all your hard work on this budget process. It definitely does not go unnoticed. And you're doing a great job.
Okay, I will make a motion adjourned.
Second.
Moving second to adjourn, Don? Motion pass five zero. I breathed on it, some sandwiches out there.